Good evening and welcome to the May 27, 2014, meeting of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Tracy Philbeck and I serve as Chairman of the Board as well as Commissioner for the Dallas Township. I'd like to welcome our viewers and thank Time Warner Cable and AT&amp;T for making this possible for our citizens. For television audience, I'd like to present to you your Gaston County Commissioners, beginning on my right.
Alan Frayley, Chair of the Township.
Good evening, Mickey Price, South Point Township.
Good evening, Jason Williams, Gastonia Township.
I'm Joe Carpenter, Crowder's Mountain Township.
Good evening, Tom Keeger, Gastonia Township.
Thank you, gentlemen. This time I call the meeting to order. I am delighted to have Boy Scout Troop 28 here with us. They will deliver the invocation and lead us in the pledge. Gentlemen.
Skies ripen. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thou wilt be done on earth as is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. We hasten on to temptation, but deliver us from evil, for the land is a kingdom, and the power and glory forever and ever. Amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you gentlemen want to come up here, we can get a picture if you'd like. You can just come all the way back here. There you go. Little guys in the front. I've been in the front my whole life.
(Laughter).
(Inaudible).
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Our next item is Agenda Revisions and Approval. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as is.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Keeger, seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. This time I'll entertain a motion for the approval of minutes regular meeting of April 22, 2014, and the closed session of April 22, 2014 pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-A11A6.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Keeger. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. And our next item is Citizen Recognition. And we have four individuals signed up. If you would, when you're asked to come to the podium, please state your name and address, and you will have five minutes to speak. First up is Donny Loftus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Donny Loftus, 1849 Gaston Day School Road, Gastonia. I want to speak tonight on an item on the agenda for lease discussion and direction. I am very proud of our local community healthcare system. We have a great leader in Doug Luckett. We have great staff who are doing some outstanding care of our community. Couple of things I'd like to mention to you that out of the 300 hospitals in North Carolina, Caramont Health is one of only 17 independent hospitals in our state. That's a fact that I'm proud of, to be an independent and a viable business partner in our community. Caramont Health has 3,980 employees, 1,082 of those are nurses, who do an outstanding job of taking care of patients every day. 485 physicians, 297 volunteers, and we did over 300 heart surgeries last year. Caramont Health has provided last year $14 million in charity care for our community. It shared $300, or $3,700,000 to community groups to improve health in our community. We spent $1.9 million in professional education. I want a smart doctor working on me. So this is not a fly-by-night organization. This is a great community organization led by a good leader, and these employees are in every one of your township. I'd like for you to also know, we were the first Purple Heart Hospital in the nation to be recognized by the Order of the Purple Heart. First one, we're in the top 100 for best hospitals in America for the last five years. We're in the top 50 for our heart program. That's here in Gaston County. And last year and this year, we're already in the running for the 20 best-looking hospitals in America. That's something we can be proud of. I fully support moving forward with this lease negotiations and working together, board to board, to impact our community. But this just didn't happen overnight. There's something that's very special about this organization, going all the way back to 1946, when this community raised over a million dollars to take care of returning heroes from our nation's wars. In 1973-74, when the Bed Tower you see now, the white elephant they call it on the hill, just think how long ago. That's 40 years ago that facility opened. It was the first facility in the United States that had all individual rooms for their patients. So we're talking about leadership in the community, a part of the community from way back. In the middle of 2000, when we opened the Neonatal Birthing Center, it was the largest in the United States at the time. It's still state-of-the-art. And recently, we were first in the region to offer the automated breast ultrasound and cryoblation for our citizens and for our patients in our community. I just wanted to tell you that you have a great community healthcare organization in this community. It is staffed by citizens from your townships. It reaches out beyond our borders. We have a great reputation, and I look forward to reaching a good agreement with the county. I look forward to working with the Commissioners and making that happen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Robert Kellogg.
Thank you. My name is Robert Kellogg, and I reside at 1652 Lowell Bethesda Road in Gastonia. I want to thank the Commission tonight for the work that they've been doing with the local school board. I know that education is an issue that's on the minds of a lot of our citizens, both here in Gaston County and in North Carolina. And it's really good to see that our local bodies and representatives can work together to try to come up with some common solutions. I want to read a list of states in descending order as far as teacher pay salaries go. New York is at the top, and then we've got Massachusetts, the District of Columbia, Connecticut, California, New Jersey, Alaska, Maryland, Pennsylvania, Rhode Island, Michigan, Delaware, Illinois, Oregon, Ohio, Wyoming, Minnesota, Nevada, New Hampshire, Wisconsin, Hawaii, Washington, Georgia, Vermont, Iowa, Indiana, Louisiana, Kentucky, Montana, Arizona, Virginia, Colorado, Idaho, Utah, Nebraska, Tennessee, Maine, Texas. I think I need bifocals. Alabama, South Carolina, Missouri, Kansas, North Dakota, Florida, Arkansas, New Mexico, and West Virginia. Finally, North Carolina, and the last three, Oklahoma, Mississippi, and South Dakota. Something is shameful when our state is in competition with Mississippi over education. I know that there's been a lot of hype and a lot of media attention and a lot of things said back and forth, and all kinds of people have different approaches and opinions on education. But I truly believe that if Gaston County is going to excel, if it is ever going to become an economic powerhouse, if we want to see our health statistics go up in the right direction and down in the right direction, if we want to see our neighborhoods secure and we want to see crimes stay at a stable level and not go up, education is the key to all of those things. I believe that our public education system is in crisis, not only here in Gaston County, but in North Carolina. Here are some of the other statistics on the state of our school system. State statistical information places Gaston County 112 in per pupil spending compared to 115 districts. Gaston County, or $911 per child spending is below the state average when compared to other districts. Gaston County is last in local funding per student among the 10 largest districts in the state, and Gaston County is number nine out of the 10. Gaston County ranked 72nd out of 100 counties in county money allocated per child. North Carolina is ranked 45th nationally in per pupil spending. 50% of our Gaston County school buildings, and it might even be higher now, are at least 30 years old, and most of those need some sort of repairs, and some of them even need to be replaced. And I apologize if any of those statistics might be wrong. They, you know, the statistics are fluid and they change every day, so those are the latest ones I have. Why are our county school teachers also in crisis? It's because budget cuts continually lead to less teacher assistance and the threat of teacher layoffs. Budget cuts force local schools to increase class size while reducing teacher assistance. No teacher raises for several years running, and North Carolina ranks 46 in the nation for teacher pay. No incentive to include education with the elimination of master pay program. Low morale as teachers do more with less money, often buying their own supplies and gathering their own resources to teach in the classroom. No more tenure status, and experienced teachers leaving the school system, creating an experienced vacuum. I came across something today that stated that the state of Texas is now recruiting North Carolina teachers and holding job fairs in our state to get those teachers that are dissatisfied here in North Carolina to jump ship and go to Texas. We have a crisis here, and I know you all know that, I know you're all working on that. But as we start to talk about county budgets and state budgets, I hope that education remains something that is in the forefront of our minds, and that we begin to have a serious discussion about where we go from here. Because if we don't invest in education now, we're going to pay for it later, one way or another. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Next is Wilma Ratchford Craig. And then Ms. Riley, you'll be next.
I'm Wilma Ratchford Craig. I live at 315 Union New Hope Road, Gastonia, North Carolina. Memorial Day has just come and gone. It's a good time to remember we, those who gave their lives that we might live. It's altogether fitting and proper that we should do this. Many of you will know where that last line came from. It's good that we honor them, as well as honoring the veterans who survive yet today. And you gave the veterans funding here in our county to make things better for them a few years ago. Thank you. Some of those veterans need help now in securing jobs, using the computers, having the libraries available. Information is free, available from our libraries. The staffs are, the staff is, I guess I should say, at each library, is one that will be of valuable help to people in getting what they need. I've been here before to inform you about libraries and to request that you restore our libraries to our former hours, and if anything else, add more. I hope that this time, our efforts will bear fruit, and that we will restore the libraries to full-time in each community in which they're located throughout the county. For this will help us educationally, economically, socially, and it'll help the spirit of our county if we know that our Commissioners are here behind us, helping us to improve things by making what we already have paid for available to us to use. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Craig. Next is Ms. Sheila Riley.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Sheila Riley. I live at 424 Pamela Street, Gastonia. I am of the Board, Chair of the Board of Trustees of Caramont Health and Caramont Regional Medical Center. And on behalf of our Board, I just wanted to take a minute to thank the Commissioners for considering our lease this evening. Our Board is united in this front to get a long-term lease in place so we can secure the future of our community hospital for generations to come. We believe it is a fair offer that shows how serious we are about taking this important step. The leadership that some of you, like Commissioners Jason Williams and Commissioner Tracy Philbeck, have been displayed, have displayed in getting us to this point should really be commended. Myself, along with the hospital staff, are here with you tonight during your discussion to make ourselves available to answer any questions that you may have concerning Caramont's offer. Again, thank you for your leadership and your consideration of our offer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Our next agenda item is Consent Agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Keeger. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Our next item is Nonconsent Agenda. We'll begin with Item A. This is Travel and Tourism, to approve agreements for purchase and sale of real property, a Howdery site, which are attached. At this time, I'll let Mr. Moore give us a little bit of background on this transaction. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have authorized the Tourism Board to engage a Realtor to assist in securing an option for a site in South Gastonia for a proposed ball field complex. And those agreements have been drafted and have been reviewed and are presented tonight. I think that there are representatives from Travel and Tourism present at night that could answer any detailed questions that you might have about the project. And also, Mr. Clay, who has prepared the draft agreements, is here also to answer any questions you have. This is a project that's been on the Board with Travel and Tourism for quite some time, and so they have finally gotten to the point where they're ready to make a proposal, and we'll see what can go forward from there.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any questions, concerns from the Board? Commissioner Price.
Yes, thank you. Back when we first, back when we first started talking about these complexes, we had also applied for a state grant for improvements at the Biggerstaff Park in Dallas. I was wondering if there's been any discussion about, should both projects be approved and moved forward? Is it, are they going to be in competition with one another, or are they going to be complementary of one another? Or is, did that, does anybody know if that conversation has taken place?
I don't.
Commissioner Carpenter?
I don't know. I sort of consider these two separate issues. You know, our county parks is for recreation within the county primarily. We do have others. This sports complex will be one that will be added for primarily economic development. It will bring people in from all over the country for these tournaments. We had a presentation today at the EDC. It was presented to them, and they adopted a resolution in support of the concept. It wasn't them to approve this particular way, but they did unanimously agree with the concept of moving forward.
I just didn't want us to go get down the road and find out we've got to, it looks like they'd be complementary if they're built.
They would, ma'am.
To be that way, but I know we've had presentations before where we didn't have enough ball fields, even if both of them were built today, we'd still be looking for, I believe, some fields to play on, according to our sports entertainment people. But I just want to make that thought out there. Just, I don't think they're going to be in competition, but I just want to know if anybody knew. Thank you.
Let me follow up. Presently, they have tournaments coming into the county, and they don't have enough of fields to accommodate all of them in any one place, and they're using fields all over. But the big thing is presently, they're already bringing in enough people at these tournaments that they're having to go out of the county to get enough rooms to house all of the people coming in. But they're filling up our hotels, but they're also filling up our restaurants to some extent. And I understand a lot of them are purchasing goods at some of our retail vendors.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Board? Commissioner Frayley.
I have one, and it's probably Chuck, addressed to him. During the due diligence period, when they're doing the feasibility study, just on this contract, just want to make sure that I'm on the same page. If there's some reason that we're unable to close, or the feasibility study doesn't play out, we will receive the earnest money back, as long as we do it within the 90-day period. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Frayley. Any other questions? Okay, I'll attempt to answer your question, Commissioner Price. I think we did ask that question about the Dallas Park, what they're trying to do there. From my understanding, they'll be complementary. They won't compete. That's my understanding. Also, Commissioner Frayley, I'm supportive of this with the understanding that if the feasibility study comes back, or there's any issues, that the county's not on the hook if we decide we're on their program. So without that said, without, with that said, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Did somebody make?
Do we have a motion? Does he have a motion? I thought I took a motion. No, I didn't. Okay, my fault.
I'll make them up.
I'll entertain a motion, Commissioner Carpenter.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Now the motion carries unanimously. At least you guys are paying attention. Okay, next up, Commissioner Price, DHHS Health Division, to appropriate funds from the Public Health Fund Balance as a subsidy to Gaston Family Health Service for Child Health Services. Commissioner Price.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This came about from our consolidation of the Health Department and the DSS. The Health Department is giving up its Child Health Services, and they will be taken, owned by Gaston Family Health Services, and this $100,000 is to get us through until the billing cycle catches up with the services rendered, that the patients will be seen, but there's no money there now to pay the staff until the reimbursements come in. So this is just a loan of $100,000 until Gaston Family starts bringing in some revenue by these Child Health Services.
Thank you, Commissioner Price. Any other questions from the Board?
That seems to be a cash flow type of situation. Okay.
Hold on, hold on. Any other questions from the Board? Okay, Earl, do you have a question or a comment?
Commissioner, I'm not sure that's a loan. I think it's a bridge extension to assist with cash flow. I believe Mr. Dobbins is agreeing with me on that. So it, in fact, it's a transfer of funds.
From my understanding, I've talked to Mr. Dobbins as well. I did have a couple of questions. I think this is a very positive thing. Again, we consolidated DSS and the Health Department. One of the things that we asked the Director to do is look for ways to save monies. So basically what we're doing, we're giving $100,000 to Gaston Family Health Service to take over this department. But long-term, we should save $100,000 every single year that we don't have to manage it. And I just say kudos to the Health Board, their Director, and very good job. So assuming Commissioner Price, you will make the motion.
I will.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Carpenter. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Last item is Item C, GEMS, to approve an additional appropriation of $206,000 for rescue squads as listed on the budget change request. I'll just say a couple of comments. I'll go ahead and make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Carpenter, and I'll just make a couple of comments. Basically, when we approved the budget last year, because it was a flat budget and there was no way to project at least totally how much funds would need to go to the rescue squads, we're now at a point to where either we'll pay this $206,000 to continue the service or cut them off. It would cost us more using GEMS, I think, than using the rescue squad. Just basically, life and why issue. Any other comments? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, there were no items for. Okay, we're down to appointments. We will go to Commissioner Frayley.
I have none tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Price.
Thank you. I have three. I'll do them all at once. Reappoint Shirley Wiggins to the Council on Aging. Reappoint Shirley Wiggins to the Region Health Agent Advisory Committee, and appoint Mr. Earl Withers III to the Emergency Medical Services Committee.
Second. Motion seconded by Commissioner Keeger. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got two. Parks and Rec Advisory Board Peter Rue, and also to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board Kevin Burke.
I will second those. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Carpenter?
I have two. One is to the Economic Development Commission, and that would be Joe Will, and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, reappoint Dee Dee Gillis.
Second. Seconded by Commissioner Keeger. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Keeger?
None this evening.
Does anyone know if Commissioner Brown has any appointments? While he's checking, I would like to make one appointment to the Sarah Local Planning Committee, Captain Gary Williams.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Keeger. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We do have a couple full Board appointments. I think the first one is Gaston College Board of Trustees. We did receive a letter requesting that Commissioner Keeger serve again. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Carpenter. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have one more, Quality of Natural Resource Committee applicant received from Mr. Robert Klimager III.
Second. If that's a motion.
Yeah, that's a motion. Seconded by Commissioner Keeger. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Is that it? Okay. We do have one more, the Designation of NACO 2014 Annual Conference Voting Delegate.
I'll nominate Mr. Carpenter.
I will second that. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Carpenter, you are the voting delegate.
Okay.
Yes. An alternate, too?
Who's going to be there?
Is this in? Is this in?
I would nominate.
Is this in New Orleans?
Yeah, Mr. Allen Frayley.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next is Commissioner Committee Reports. Commissioner Frayley.
No, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Price.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attended the Gaston Family Health Services Board in April, and I just want to report on a, we had a mission of mercy clinic. It was actually a mini-mission. It was, had the dentists in the area, volunteered work, saw 69 patients that day, provided over $27,000 worth of dental free care, had nine volunteer dentists, and that was a prelude to the big one coming up later in the year. We also had our presentation on bylaw revisions, and those will be voted on tomorrow night. That concludes my highlights of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Price. Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to point out that we did have our Karamot Community Challenge a couple of weeks ago that went very well. So appreciate everything the hospital did for that, specifically Mr. Mullen over there beside our CEO did a phenomenal job putting that together. Was thrilled to see Ms. Kathy Hart was there representing Parks and Rec, and those great calls for the Schools of Robotics Program. Right, is that what it was for? So, great work. There was a glitch in the system. Somehow, it's showing that my wife beat me by about half a second. That's in dispute. There's an asterisk beside of that. I don't know how she beat me in the 5K, but we're looking into it. There's a problem there. The thing that was more impressive than that was the fact that David O'Connor over here actually beat half the group pushing a stroller. And the baby was in the stroller, and that's probably the most impressive thing about that whole day was the 5K in the stroller and actually beat most of us. So, other than that, our chairman, Phil Beck, was one of the guest speakers, did a phenomenal job representing the county commission. Great event. Look forward to doing it again next year. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. I did tell him the cheeseburger he was eating probably slowed him down. Commissioner Carpenter.
Well, let me add my thanks to the hospital for engaging this community in healthcare and trying to make us all more fit for the future. I was out there and it was a wonderful day. Very large crowd and looked like it was well participated in, and thank you. I did attend the EDC meeting, Economic Development Commission meeting today, and we did discuss the travel and tourism plans, but a significant part was the board is assigning a task force to look at our mission and what the Economic Development Commission should be doing for this community. And we do have a mission and goals, but we're going to look at that again, and so anybody have any input on that, we'd like to hear from you. You know, that's one thing this community can do. We can do a lot for education, but if we can do things to increase the tax base here, which will help all of us out in paying probably a few taxes per each, but it and the money that primarily in sales taxes the travel and tourism project will bring in is going to be tremendous. And I commend that board for the work they do, and that's one way we can get out of the kind of the hole that we've been in with the loss of the textile industry over the last number of years. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Commissioner Keger.
Also attended the Karamot Community Challenge and the EDC meeting today. I won't elaborate on that since it's been mentioned, and I just want to thank Mr. J. Delpes for organizing and funding the joint dinner between the commissioners and the college trustees last week. I think it was a good and educational time for everyone, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Commissioner Keger. County Managers Report. Think we're going to have a presentation of the 2014-2015 Gaston County Budget.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, members of the public, and so many representatives of our county government. It's indeed an honor and a pleasure to be here this evening. I've been involved in a lot of different budget processes, and I may deviate a little bit from what you have experienced in the past. I won't be necessarily adhering to a script, but I'm going to try to hit the high points. Certainly, you have all the information that you could possibly want on our budget, which is contained in a rather large book. Before I really get going, I would like to express my thanks to several people, and I guess the top of the list is Bryant Moorhead, who is sitting in the back of the room. He has put through, put in countless hours in preparing our budget documents and certainly sat through numerous meetings with all the department heads and other representatives of county government that have been actively engaged in this process for a couple of months now. So this is, in some sense, the culmination of the budget process inasmuch as we certainly do have the manager's budget available for your perusal. But many people spent a lot of time on this, and I would also commend our department heads for all the work that they've put in, and certainly their diligence in terms of trying to maintain our services with rather constrained resources as they have been doing for many years. You know, I believe that there's a reason why we're all here. We are blessed to be able to serve this community, and I think it is incumbent upon us to be good stewards of the resources that we have. And certainly, that is my objective, and I believe that every elected official and every appointed official that is associated with Gaston County Government feels precisely the same way. Okay, we have a series, a relatively short series, I will add, of slides that we're going to go through this evening. We're not going to belabor a lot of these, and we don't have a great deal of technical information. Certainly, I'd be happy to respond to any questions that you might have, and if I'm unable to answer those questions, I have other experts in the room that can certainly fill in. Okay, you know, I think it's obvious that this is a transitional year for Gaston County Government in terms of our budget. We're transitioning at the present time to a stronger economy. It's one that I believe yields many exciting prospects for the future. So I'm confident that as we go through time, our revenue picture will improve. We are also confronted with a time in which we're doing a reevaluation of our property values, and that is going to strongly influence perhaps our revenue picture in the future. So in that sense, we're also undergoing a transition. Finally, this is a year in which we're introducing priority-based budgeting, and this is a process that will change the approach that we use to budgeting in Gaston County to some extent, and I believe it's going to yield results that will be beneficial to us as well. So to begin looking at some of the challenges that we face, you know, quality service, I think, is synonymous with good governance, and certainly, everyone would agree with that, and everyone would recognize the importance of doing, providing good governance to the citizens of Gaston County of utilizing our resources as well as we possibly can. There's been some discussion, I think, of maintaining fund balance, too, and certainly our fiduciary responsibility to the citizens of Gaston County is to maintain an adequate fund balance. The state requires, in fact, that we maintain a fund balance of 8%. Currently, we are at about 19%, and with the budget that I'm presenting this evening, that could fall as low as 15% in the coming year. I anticipate that as things improve somewhat, that fund balance will continue to grow again and reverse the trend that we've seen over the last five years, which is not necessarily favorable and is certainly unsustainable. But Gaston County is in good financial condition. I think that our bond rating attests to that. We are currently and are maintaining a AA-minus bond rating, and that indicates that we are not only in good financial health, but we have a stable outlook for the future. I believe that rewarding our employees is an exceptionally important thing that we need to do with this year's budget, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. But in terms of preserving the organizational health that we have, in terms of productivity, employee morale, efficiency, and even reducing costs in a variety of areas, it's important that we reward our employees adequately. So that's another one of the challenges that we face in this year's budget. This next slide has to do with growth in the budget, which is relatively minimal. There aren't really significant changes in this budget, but with any budget of this magnitude, there will be a few. Our budget overall is approximately $268 million. That includes, of course, certain funds that are earmarked and others that are enterprise funds that basically are for restricted purposes. So we're really dealing, for the most part, with our general fund budget, which is $190,535,127. That budget has an increase of about $8.6 million, which is a modest amount considering a variety of factors, especially including the austerity of our budgeting in recent years as well as inflationary pressures and that sort of thing. This slide on the budget drivers, which may be a little bit small for you to see, but it has to do with some of the increases that I'll talk about in a minute and as do the next couple of slides. But the pie chart gives a breakdown and explains some of the modest changes that you see in our budget, some of which are associated with the Department of Health and Social Services as well as the Public Safety Budget. And then, of course, the 3% COLA that we are recommending in this year's budget. The next slide has to do with social services, and the amount of increase corresponds almost exactly to the decrease that we had in the FY14 budget or the FY14 adopted budget, and this amount, as you may recall, was restored in September of 2013. There is also included in this budget $548,000 for a 3% increase for social services staff. So I would very much commend the staff in the Department of Health and Social Services for the excellent work that they have done in terms of meeting the demands of constrained resources and doing it in a way that does indeed preserve the quality of our services in a very admirable way. The Public Safety Budget, like social services, is one that, you know, in which some funds were restored during the course of the current fiscal year. So while it does show an increase, those increases, I think, are explained fairly readily. This slide breaks everything down, and as you can see, some of the new responsibilities that GEMS has, particularly in Cherville and South Point, as well as the purchase of a number of public safety vehicles, which I might, you know, as an aside comment on the fact that most of our vehicles, when they are replaced, have in the neighborhood of 150,000 miles or more. And for public safety vehicles, that really is extending them beyond their useful life. So that is clearly something that needs to be addressed, but due to the fact that we have deferred some of those expenses in the recent past, the cost is fairly high this year. We've built into the budget two new telecommunicators or dispatchers, and that will allow us to have an enhanced approach for emergency communications. We're also adding two building inspectors, and this will have a direct offset in terms of the anticipated increases in revenue that we're looking for. This next slide has to do with the cost of living adjustment that is being proposed. As I mentioned before, it's 3%. I would strongly recommend approving this or maintaining this within the budget for some of the reasons that I've already mentioned. But, you know, it's important, I think, as we start into the new fiscal year, for our employees to recognize the fact that we truly value them and that we're willing to do something on their behalf. We are losing staff at present to neighboring jurisdictions, and I don't just mean Mecklenburg County. I mean, that's understandable to some extent. I believe that historically Gaston County has lost staff to Mecklenburg because of their higher wages and that sort of thing. But at the present time, we're losing staff in all directions, and this really compromises the quality of our organization, and the trend clearly needs to be reversed. If we continue to move in this direction, we're going to have problems with lost productivity, increased training costs, and a host of other problems that will be problematic for our organization and will ultimately diminish the quality of services that we provide to our residents. A few of the other budget highlights that we have contained in your document this evening. I think most of the things on this list are either mandated or they're things that you have already committed to. So whether it's the $310,000 for improved cable access equipment, which is desperately needed, our equipment is so outdated that it's impossible. I think they're looking for parts on eBay at this point. So, you know, things like this are necessary. Tax audits, the $350,000 payment to the state for tax and tag administration is mandated, and so forth, as is the retiree health insurance. These are not things that are really optional for us, so they more or less have to be included in our budget. New positions, I already mentioned, the telecommunicators and the building inspectors. We are also, I think, restoring a wellness coordinator, and that's really an important thing, I think, with a lot of hidden benefits. We moved away from our wellness programs a couple of years ago, and that to the detriment of county government in some important ways. I think we need to recognize that wellness is critical to the health of our employees as well as the health of our organization in terms of productivity, and the success of our employees is strongly influenced by their health and fitness and all these kinds of things. But the bottom line, too, is that, you know, the risk if you don't have a viable wellness program is that our insurance costs naturally rise. And a good wellness program can, in fact, even save lives because through the identification of chronic illness or potentially catastrophic illnesses that people may have, we can head off some of those huge problems that maybe... off some of those huge problems that may be looming on the horizon. Just a couple of words about our funding of the schools. We've had some discussions about this. As you know, I was directed to move $4 million from the operating side of the school's budget to the capital side. And I believe that, it's my opinion and I've expressed before, that it will be extraordinarily difficult for the schools to manage under those conditions. Certainly, I understand very well the board's desire to improve the quality of our schools through capital improvements. And no one would argue that our schools are in very good condition, and clearly we need a significant increase in capital funding for our schools. Well, we've accommodated that already to a degree by the release of $8.5 million, $7.5 million of which will go directly towards capital improvements. And I believe that Mr. Bradley has identified a plan, if properly sequenced, that would enable us to improve capital funding for the schools several years into the future without significantly encumbering our debt service more than it already is. So, excuse me. You know, I believe, you know, education is fundamental to the economic success and even the cultural viability of Gaston County. So, you know, while we have maintained funding at its current level, I do reiterate the fact that I believe it's going to be difficult for the schools to manage with $4 million less in their operating budget. Likewise, with Gaston College, we have maintained the budget at its current level. There is no increase in either operating or capital funding contained in this budget at present. And I will say, too, that Gaston College, of course, did come and present their budget to us, and they asked for what I felt was a very modest increase. On the operating side, it was $150,000, which, considering the caliber of the institution that we're talking about and the inflationary pressures that we all experience, I felt that was a relatively modest request. Well, I pretty much have concluded what I wanted to present to you this evening. I would make a couple of comments with respect to where we can find the budget. As you can see, there is a website where anyone can access the Gaston County budget. And certainly, we can make hard copies available through the clerk to the board, Donna, on my immediate right here. And it's also, I think it will be available at the main library on Garrison. So I'd be happy to respond to any questions or comments that you might have.
Thank you, Earl. I think Commissioner Williams nods to me first if he'd like to say a few words. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just made a couple of bullet points here. I know you started off by saying this is a transitional year, and I couldn't agree more. I think this board has embraced the idea of the priority-based budget, and I think we're putting a lot of confidence in that process, and we really think that that's going to pay major dividends for our county moving forward. I think it's incumbent upon us to support the measures that come out of it, but at the end of the day, I think we're really buying into the priority-based budget. So we're very grateful that you kind of brought that along, and we understand that that's a process that we're already working through. And the fact is, this is a pretty vanilla budget that's kind of getting us to that point, and I think that's kind of what our board wanted. I mean, there's no bells and whistles, but the fact is, there's a few things that I like. I think we're giving our employees a much-needed raise that they've not seen in some time. It's not raising the property taxes. Where, the other thing I like, we're improving the cable access equipment. And that's a big deal. A lot of people don't understand how big that is. I think for us, we take a lot of pride in being probably the most transparent government body that I know of, and I think we pride ourselves on that. This equipment should make it so that we're able to stream online. Things will be available for the public even more so. But, you know, one of the things we want to do is make ourselves available for people to know what's going on. The question I've got, there's a couple of questions, is the wellness coordinator. I know Chairman Philbeck is a huge champion for the healthcare revolution that Karamot has. Would that not be something we could offer on a regular basis as opposed to bringing on a new employee? Could we not maybe offer that or some variety of that to our employees working with our hospital?
Thank you for your question and comments, Commissioner Williams. You know, I'm not certain what the answer to your question is. I don't see why we, I certainly believe we could explore that possibility. Obviously, Karamot has tremendous resources that we could avail ourselves of, and whether that would totally supplant the need for a wellness coordinator, I'm not certain.
Okay. Well, I'd like to at least kind of entertain that. Maybe I don't understand the whole gambit of what a wellness coordinator would do, but I do know that that's, you know, paid major dividends for those of us that took it, and again, including our chairman, who is a huge advocate for that program. So I think maybe we should at least consider that. As far as the school funding, you know, we talked about a lot of new folks around, and we're very fortunate to have Jeff Booker with us as the superintendent. And I think what our board, and I don't want to speak for the board, but I think what we have decided we want to do is we've really made a priority of capital. And I think you're talking about ways that we found that we can maintain our schools, we can make a lot of needed repairs and upgrades. And I think our board supports that. I think that's something we've talked about that we want to move forward with. Our concern is, at some point, let's say, everything has been fixed, everything's repaired, at some point, we need to make sure that they're properly funded to make sure that they can achieve the full life expectancy of the facility. And we need to properly fund that and make sure that it's in the capital plan so that we don't end up in a situation where we have 100-plus million dollars in repairs and renovations that we have to do at one time. We're very fortunate to have, you know, this vehicle available to us right now, but what's to say it's going to be there, you know, in 15 years if we need it again? So our board has talked about incrementally getting where we need to be when it comes to capital improvement. Personally, I think there's a lot of things in the budget that I would like to see. Fortunately, I don't know if the money's there. I would like to figure out a way if we could offer our teachers some sort of small supplement to at least show them that we appreciate what they're doing and that we understand that sometimes it's, they're underpaid, underappreciated. And, you know, if there was some way we could do that, I would probably be supportive of that measure. But I appreciate the budget. I think you put it together really well, and I'm actually very excited about next year's budget and to see kind of what we put together for next year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Keeger?
Mr. Chairman, could I respond very quickly to a couple of things Commissioner Williams said?
Yes.
You know, I don't disagree, and I believe that Mr. Booker would also agree that, you know, providing for the ongoing maintenance of facilities is really important. And indeed, I would suggest that Gaston County's own facilities have suffered from deferred maintenance to some extent, and we probably need to do a lot more there. And it just hasn't been possible because of our budgetary constraints. But that is something that we certainly need to get turned around in the future as well. And I wholeheartedly agree with your sentiments about the teachers. And I believe that Mr. Booker has suggested that there will be the potential for him to match within his budget, possibly out of his reserves, anything that we could do along those lines.
Commissioner Keeger?
Thank you. Well, sometimes disagreement helps us see things from other perspectives, and I'm going to be a little disagreeable of the, which I believe is the direction of the board. And I'm not putting, trying to put anybody down. I'm just trying to find a way to make things better. And, you know, we know, we know for a fact, I think everybody understands, or at least you've indicated to me over the past months or years, that the schools do need more money. And, you know, capital is extremely important. It's half of what we budget, that and operating. But we all know that utilities have gone up, and they're going up. Food is going up the highest it's gone up in decades right now. Utilities are going up. And we're actually having a conversation about taking $4 million out of a strained budget for operations already. That's something that I just, you know, I just don't think it's right. And if I don't think it's right, I sure can't approve it. But in talking to staff and Mr. Mathers over the recent weeks, and Mr. Bradley, I think if we give staff a little time, you know, we're retiring some debt, you know, from the DSS building, the courthouse, the jail, things like that, it's diminishing. And I think Mr. Bradley and Bryant, they may have a way that we might be able to add to the capital but keep that $4 million. That's a real hard thing to do. It's fairly easy to just, we just let it go without really fighting to fill that void that we're talking about doing. And I really hope the board gives staff some direction to see if we might be able to alter the direction of removing $4 million in operating. It's, I mean, it's just, classrooms are just getting by. I know it firsthand. You know the story. I'm not trying to get any sympathy, but one of my own daughters had to leave the county school system, and she hated it. But she had to, to get a raise over in Mecklenburg. Earl, Mr. Mathers, county manager, pointed out that the county government is losing employees. Well, we're losing a lot of school people also that aren't necessarily county employees. But is that what we want to be leaders of? We're the leaders of this community, and we're talking about taking money away that they can't afford. If anything, they need an influx. But I, you know, as far as that $4 million, if the board would agree, and I want to ask Mr. Mathers, do you think that there's a possibility, after we've discussed this, that there might be a way to keep that $4 million in there?
Thank you, Commissioner Keeger. Well, certainly, there is a way that we can keep the $4 million in there. With respect to capital funding, Mr. Bradley has put together a sort of a schedule that, by which we could consistently augment capital funding for the schools over the next, I believe, four years. We, as you know, we have available approximately $95 million in bonding authority that has already been authorized by the voters. So it would be a matter of selling those bonds and having a schedule that allowed us to maintain our debt service more or less level at, you know, at our current level, or perhaps a modest increase, but certainly not an astronomical increase. And I believe that is manageable, yes.
You know, we understand, I think most of us believe, that education and Gaston County's record for education forever hasn't been real good. You know, we've led the state in, you know, the number of dropout rates. We've been towards the top in graduation rates, the wrong end of the top. But if it's the root of everything that grows a community, why are we even talking about eliminating almost 10% of the operation? It fits the biggest economic development tool. And I have to speak up for the college also. As a trustee there, we cut the college, I don't know, how many years ago was it? Five, four years ago? We cut them, and they're doing so much more with so much less that things can't keep on life support. I mean, it needs an infusion. And that I don't have an answer for, other than a one-time thing out of the fund balance. But with the school system, I really think that, you know, we could go ahead and get rid of some of the bonds that have been approved and use the debt retirement that the county will realize to pay for those. Because we're paying a lot more interest on the old bonds that we're retiring than we are on these new ones or would. The interest rates are just so much lower that we have that advantage also. So all I can do is ask the board to consider allowing staff to bring us a proposal before we have a public hearing or when we have a public hearing, and see if that really is a possibility to keep the schools whole to where they are now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Keeger. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mathers, thank you for your presentation. I personally would like to see if we could find these new positions that we've talked about, which we've cut positions or we've held them in check for so long. I'd like to see each of these ones who are asking for new positions sort of give a description of what their duties and structure is going to be within the county over the next five years, not just this year coming. I would like to see what Commissioner Williams added on with the wellness coordinator, maybe somehow to partner with Karamot to finding ways. We've talked about trying to have our community in a better lack of wellness. Why not start with our own, partner up in showing what a partnership is really about? We're here to talk about that tonight anyway. I think that's a great thing that we can really go into. I think there's some drivers here that I do like. I agree with Commissioner Williams. One of the things, he said, some of the things, we're getting rid of some old stuff and finally getting some new stuff that can help us out for the future for many years. But the one thing I don't like about the budget is how are we going to continue to keep kicking it down the road? Sort of, we've finally got our fund balance back. I don't want to see us use any more fund balance, and we've finally got it steady. It took us a couple of years to finally slow it down a little bit because it was running downhill, and we saw that. I would just like to see in our next presentation, maybe something that each department here can come back and maybe just give us an example of something that they're willing to, and I'm not saying we have to take it out, but something that they're willing to compromise just for the good of the team, to see where we are. Not necessarily that we say they're going to be done, but it's something that we can look into for the future to see what's next down the road for our five-year plan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond briefly? Perhaps I created a little confusion on the fund balance issue, but our fund balance has, for the most part, been declining for a period of five years. At one point was at about 27%. And it did, it has stabilized to a degree in the last couple of years, and we're currently at about 19%. You know, that may fall a little bit more before we reverse the trend. But I will say that in comparison with many of our counterparts around the country, we're in strong financial position, and our fund balance is adequate, not as good as I would like it to maximize my comfort level, but we're not in dire straits.
Also, do we have our audit numbers back for our property taxes on what the percentage was of return this year?
You know, the, yes, I think we do for the most part, and we're running very strong. I think it was 97.5. We're not certain, but it's very high.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Price?
Thank you. On page 10, it says, "New Positions." Social Services Health Division. I know at our I know at our monthly board meetings, we usually go over positions available, and there's usually 20-some in each division. Are these new positions, or is this a position that is replacing one of those vacant positions? And the same thing with information technology. I know we have openings there, but is this a position you're giving up that's currently vacant, and you want a new network analyst? Is that, do you know?
In the case of information technology, their staffing numbers are lower than they formerly were. So this is the restoration of a position. I'm not absolutely certain with respect to the social services position, but I will say that through a variety of means, that department has created tremendous efficiencies and is saving substantial amounts of money. Some of that is through outsourcing, and some of it is, I think, just capturing efficiencies in other ways. But overall, I'd have to research this to some extent, but I'm pretty confident when I say that overall, their numbers are lower than they formerly were.
I would be okay with the positions, as long as there's a vacancy in the department, and they're giving up a position, so we don't have an increase. We've been pretty adamant about adding new positions over the years. Also, do you have your notebook with you?
Yes.
On page 62, it says, "Commissioners and Clerk."
Okay, I'm there.
Okay. 2013, 2004, adopted was 379, 521, and the recommended is 404, 781. It's a difference of 25, 260. If you could get me the information of what causes or what's involved in that 25,000, 260, the difference, before our public hearing, I would appreciate that on each department, the increase. Just what makes up the increase and why it's there? And I don't know if anybody else wants it, but that's the only questions I had, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I only have one question in Mr. Mathers' presentation on the transfer of the 4 million. He said it would be problematic for the schools, and I was wondering if there's a way to phase that in a way to get to that point where we are fully funding the capital needs, maintenance needs of our school. As catalog read, all 46 states, it's above us in funding. I think their goal ought to be as frugal as we are. But I just wonder, you know, we have considered education as one of the top goals of this board. We even did a resolution last year supporting that idea. And I don't want to go backwards, but I do support getting that money into the capital that they need to maintain our schools. According to the state constitution and statutes, our number-one priority is to build and maintain the facilities. And some of the underfunding of the schools is because we do supplements, and we can't keep up with other states. It's been 12, 15 years ago, I was part of a study commission with the North Carolina Association of County Commission to try to address that issue and get the policies in the state to where it became more equitable across the state with school funding. Because a county like Mecklenburg or Wake or some of the others have a larger tax base, they can supplement more. And the counties around them don't have that same advantage. I think it should be a goal that the state, everybody needs to work and get that resolved in that funding structure. But I do agree that we need to get that over. The 4 million, all in one year, if there's a way to phase that, I would prefer to see that, because I don't want them going backwards either. Thank you.
So if, just to make sure that I have this clearly, you're interested in determining if a phased approach to the reduction in operating funds and transfer to the capital side of the school's budget is feasible?
I think that's what I rambled around and said.
And response to that, I believe that I would have to consult with Mr. Booker about that, and how we could manage that process, what would be reasonable for the schools.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Commissioner Freyli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few statements. I also can support Commissioner Kegger's plea not to cut the operation funds, especially even if we have to do it in a phased-in process like Commissioner Carter was talking about. This seems like an awful big hit at one time, and it seems to be sending the wrong message, even if it can be accomplished. I want to see us move forward. We've made a commitment in education, like Joe said, that this is a top priority for this board, and I don't want to see us go backwards in any way. And this looks like it is, even if it isn't. But hopefully, we'll work on that. Also, very pleased that we're going to be budgeting for a pay increase for employees, way overdue, and I appreciate their hanging in there and doing the job they do every day. Just pleased that we're finally able to make this happen. And do look forward to going into the priority-based budgeting process next year. I think it's going to help us determine a lot of things that we're just kind of moving through this year to try to keep level, and I think that's going to be a great asset for us as we move forward. And I appreciate the budget you prepared, Earl, and that's it. Other than just need to spend a little more time with this, see if I have any other questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Freyli. I have a few comments. First, I want to thank the staff. Earl, I think considering arriving here in January, very quickly putting a budget together, I'd like to commend you on your work. What I'm really looking forward to is next year, when we have a priority-based budget that we can finally prioritize exactly what we want to do. I do have some, a couple of concerns and probably a couple of explanations. As far as the wellness coordinator, I personally will not support that. I went through the healthcare revolution at Caramont, lost 35 pounds. I think it was $1,700, if I'm correct, at the time that they came here to the county and offered it to all the directors. I think that we could save, I would like to see us work with Caramont to see if that's something they could offer, and maybe just work out some details, see if we can save some money. I'm not going to support hiring an employee to do that. I think the long-term cost of that would be pretty significant. So I would like for you to maybe get with them and see what they can do for our employees. Then if it's not feasible, then we can always go back and look at that. Also, on the school's budget, I want to make some clarifications. We're not talking about cutting operations by 4 million, and I really don't know where that came from. We're actually talking about moving 2.8 million from operations to capital. Currently, we fund Gaston County schools 1.2 million. We have their budget request, and one of the biggest complaints in here is, we only get 1.2 million in capital funding from the commission. Gaston County Commission, whether we like it or not, are mandated by the state of North Carolina to provide for the capital of schools and the upkeep. That's what we're mandated to do. We are not doing a very good job. We're doing 1.2 million. I've heard this from school board members, I've heard it from Mr. Booker, year after year, and I actually agree. I think we have to change that number. So what I support is moving some funds in operations over to the infrastructure side, because that's what we're mandated to do. It's not sexy, doesn't look good, doesn't feel good. I can give you a lot of sad stories of why we shouldn't, but if we don't do it, we're going to continue to kick the can down the road, and one day, we're going to have an even bigger problem. Let me explain. Last year, we gave Gaston County schools $8.5 million extra. We changed that, instead of building new schools or allowing those bonds to lap. We basically reallocated that for capital. That's an $8.5 million increase. We also spent, I think it was $500,000 at North Gaston. That's a $500,000 increase. What the public don't hear a lot of times is that, year after year after year, since '09 that I've been here at least, we've increased school spending. A lot of people don't hear that, but we have increased it year after year after year. Also, there is a plan that we could spend $65 million of the bonds that we currently have without increasing the tax rate, period. Because old bond debt will retire, we could bring on new bond debt, use that money to help fix some of these schools, and never have to raise the tax rate. And we're looking at doing that in the next three years. That's another $65 million. Here's the problem, though. All that sounds great, but if we don't raise the 1.2 million side of capital, you're going to have new schools, you're going to have all these schools fixed, and you're going to have 1.2 million to keep up all these schools. It's impossible. If we don't change that formula, we're going to keep digging a hole, deeper and deeper and deeper. So the proposal was to take the 2.8 million from the operating side, move that to capital, to slowly move that forward. Now, I'm fine if the board wants to change that 2.8 number, but at some point, somewhere down the road, if we don't raise that number, if we let $200 million in bonds today, fixed every school, all brand-new schools, we only have 1.2 million a year to fix it. I think anybody at the school board will tell you, that's not going to fix it. So we have to change that allocation. That's what I'm advocating for. I'm willing to compromise on the numbers, I'm willing to work with the board, but I'm not going to vote for a budget that doesn't change the formula, because what's going to happen, you're going to hurt the school system, it'll hurt the taxpayer long term. That's a big issue for me. Also, I agree with the gentleman that spoke during Citizen Comments about teacher pay, but again, what the public don't know is that teachers are state employees, not county employees. At the same time, we're forced by the state, because they don't adequately pay teachers, I think, where we have to provide a supplement. It's kind of like incentives. You don't like them, but it's something you kind of have to do. What I would propose is, if, based off of your comments, Mr. Manager, if the schools would match a percentage, is that, from my understanding, a 1% increase will cost the citizens $59,000, if I'm correct, somewhere around that area. Is that maybe we do a 1.3, I mean, a 1.5 increase, let the schools do a 1.5 increase, and that will give the teachers a 3% supplement increase. It'll get, because our county employees are getting a 3% supplement increase, and it's going to cost the county, if I'm correct, $90,000. So out of $260 million budget, if we could help increase teacher supplements and only spend $90,000, I think that's something I can support. So we can dig into the details of how we will do that, and I think that's something worth looking at. I guess my last statement, I agree with the board. Also, the chamber has really pushed for us to have a world-class educational system. I think we need to do everything we can to fund education adequately. I support Jeff, I think he's done a great job. I'm happy to see Kenny Lutz here, Jeff Ramsey, Kevin Collier. I appreciate you gentlemen for being here. And I think we have a better relationship with the school board, and I'm willing to meet with them and work with them and see what we can do to come up with creative ideas. At the end of the day, when the federal government cuts, and then the state cuts, the county cannot take on all these new responsibilities and then provide what we're mandated to do. It's a catch-22. And if we don't fix the capital, long term, we're going to have some major, major issues. We're already having those. So that's my comments on the budget. Anyone else have any other comments? Commissioner Kegger?
Yeah, I'd still like to hear from the Finance Department. You're talking about changing the formula. Well, we are going to have a lot of debt reduction coming the county's way in the next several years. I'd like to see some type of formula where that money is used for the capital of the schools, since we'll be retiring that debt from these buildings around this complex. And I got to ask, I guess, if I may, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mathers, you'd mentioned that we're not taking 4 million, but the first line on your slide says, "Reduction of operation funds by 4 million." So you said it was like 2-something, and this says 4 million, so I'm a little confused, I guess.
I can certainly respond to that. In fact, the budget that we presented has the transfer of 4 million from operating to capital, but that could be due to, you know, perhaps miscommunication between myself and members of the board in terms of what we were, the direction that we're supposed to go. But that is easily rectified.
Yeah. I think there was general consensus that, looking at 2.8 million, it added up to 4, not 4 million. And also, Commissioner Kegger, to answer your question, I do agree we could move some of the bond money to help, as we change the formula, to move money over, but once the bond money runs out, how are you going to keep maintaining these schools? So at some time, we have to be able to increase the capital side, fix the schools, and not to depend on bond money to do it. But I don't know what the answer is, but we have to get there somehow.
Well, most other counties, and we do, to an extent, probably not as well as we could, because, you know, we're a little different here in Gaston because of our economy, you know, it went down the tubes, textile. But every, you know, we could come up with that plan every six or eight years or four years, whenever revow comes in, and we can hook part of revow to the capital, because property is always going to increase. Now, we had some setbacks over the last couple of decades, but they're going to happen here and there, but we can tie a capital funding formula, probably to revow a percentage of That's the only way we can do it without tax increases. So we'll have a better grasp on that come the end of this year.
And I'm looking at all options. So any ideas that we have to change the formula, adequately fund the schools, I'm willing to listen to. Any other comments from the board?
Thank you, Mr. Mathers. Great job, great discussion from the board. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item is County Attorney's Report.
No report tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Are you sure?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chuck. Next item, under Other Matters, is a Caramont lease discussion and direction. I would like to acknowledge CEO from Caramont, Doug Luckett, who is here tonight. We have several board members as well, Sheila Riley and Donnie Loftus, and thank you for coming out tonight. Over the past six, seven months, maybe a year or longer, we have had several lively discussions with Caramont.
discussions with Caramont to discuss some type of a lease arrangement and things of that nature. I'm happy to report that we did get a letter from Caramont outlining some initial framework for a starting point with a lease, and I want to just go over a couple of these with the board and provide some comments, and then we'll let our liaison to the Caramont Board maybe give us a little bit more detail, and then we can have some comments. The letter specifically stated that Caramont is willing to look at a $20 million corporate bond with no less than a 4% return, which should equal about 800, I mean, $800,000 per year over the life of the loan. Also, an additional $450,000 to be used for community health projects, a 40-year lease with one additional rollover. Thank you, Boy Scouts, Troop 28 for coming, appreciate it. Hey, you're fine. You sat here longer than I would have. Thank you. Okay. Also, I think Caramont is looking at five at-large appointments that they would like their nominating committee to make. Some of the discussions that we had, I want to give you some, maybe a little bit of framework. The $800,000, the $20 million corporate bond with the 4% return, I think there was pretty good discussion and agreement. Commissioner Williams, you can kind of let me know on some of these if I'm on it or not, is that we would index the bond and the lease payment to make sure they kept up with inflation. So, for example, if you gave us $450,000 a year now, 20, 30 years down the road, it's not going to be worth $450,000. So, we are looking at having that index, and I think there was some agreement on that. I think from our board and some of the discussions, most of our board was comfortable with three appointments. I'm not speaking for the board, I'm just saying from what I've heard. Although Caramont said they would like five. It's also my understanding that no appointments, if we went with this agreement, there would be no appointments from Caramont until at least after January the 1st, whatever the final number came out to be. Let me see here. And I think, yeah, the commissioners' representative would have a full voting, the commissioners' would have a full voting member, and that's as much kind of detail as I have. Maybe Commissioner Williams can weigh in. I will say this, I do support the framework. I think there's a lot of work that's went into this. For years, I've heard citizens complaining, and I think rightly so, that we needed more than a dollar for that amount of land. I'd like to thank Doug Luckett. I think he has stepped to the plate, wanted to work with the commission every step of the way. I think this is a good agreement to work with. I don't think either side gets everything they want. I think we both can come out winning, and I think more importantly, and what should trump all of this is the citizens of Gaston County will win by an independent hospital, one that has a long-term lease, and a hospital that is paying its fair share, that will benefit the citizens of this county. Thank you, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me take a step back before I kind of get into a few of the things you talked about. And I just want to say that, you know, serving on the Caramont Board has probably been one of the most rewarding things I've been able to do. Being able to be a part of such a great organization, great people, people that really take pride in what they do, has really been an honor for me, and I've enjoyed just having that privilege to do so. The timeline that I'm familiar with, having just been put on the board last January, was there was some discussion with the county and with the hospital, and there was never really anything that either side could agree to, and there was never a framework that either side was comfortable with. And last year, there was some well-publicized disagreement, and there were some issues that was going on at our hospital, that the commission took a step back last April and really admonished Caramont to take a look internally and say, okay, there's some things that are going on in the organization that you have to address. You know, this lease should be put on the back burner while you take a look at some things internally. And I remember specifically some things that we talked about with the hospital is, first of all, it was, you know, recruit a CEO that is engaged in the community. It was work on the emergency department. There were complaints that our, this county commission, we received complaints about wait times, the service provided, things like that all the time. And I remember the third thing was working on the hospitalist issue. We got emails on our board from a number of citizens that were disappointed with what they were receiving from Caramont when it came to these three things. And so, the county commission sent word and said, hey, we want you to focus on these things before we actually move forward with the lease. And I just wanted to kind of report on that because I think that's the most important thing that we should take a look at, since those were the directives that we gave to Caramont. I think we should start by pointing out that we recruited a CEO. We spent, I believe, seven months going through a process. We had stakeholders, we had community leaders, employees, board members, I believe our county commission, we had a representative on one of those committees deciding on who we want to bring in as our CEO. And after seven months, we realized that we had a rock star right in our own backyard in Mr. Doug Luckett. And we talked about how we needed somebody engaged in the community, and I can assure you, saying Doug Luckett is engaged in the community in Gaston County is probably one of the biggest understatements of the year. Not only is he engaged in the community, he's respected by the physicians, which is a big deal. That's something we were concerned about. And he's dedicated to the long-term success of the organization, and he's committed to keeping us independent as long as possible. And I don't think there's anything else you can ask in a CEO other than that. So, that was number one, and that was the biggest thing, and I think you can put a big check mark beside that. I think we've, at the hospital, we've accomplished that goal. The second thing was to work on our emergency department. And just have a couple of things here I want to share with you. We talked about wait times and the service provided, and, you know, we made a decision internally that we would bring our hospitalist program back into Caramont Health, with staff it internally, not with an outside management company. Now, our program is staffed with local full-time physicians that are engaged in Gaston County. We're not using locums, we're trying to really keep it in-house. We have significant improvements in patient perception with a 90% reduction of complaints. Now, think about that for a minute. A 90% reduction in complaints. That's amazing for, with our hospitalist. The other thing we talked about with the ED is how do we help with the wait times? Well, we're going to be breaking ground here in a few months on the pediatric ED. In January, we're going to be opening up the standalone ED in Malholy, and we have three urgent care facilities open seven days a week. And so, I think these are all things that we're trying to do. We decided also a couple of months ago that we would review our current agreement and really research and evaluate various providers, and we decided through a committee of well-respected physicians, Dr. Ryberg, Dr. Russo, Dr. Thomason, Dr. Clasing, Dr. Clark, these are all people, Dr. Reinhart, that many of us know and respect and really trust their judgment. They got together and really made a recommendation about what we should do with our ED and decided to go with Apollo MD. So, effective July 1st, we're going to go with Apollo MD, which is a physician-led group with more than 35 years' experience. So, I think those are things dealing with the emergency department wait times and dealing with the service that our citizens will get at their organization. I think those are things that Caramont took a step back and said, we need to address them as well. I talked about the hospitalist issue, how we're moving that in-house, and that's been very well-received. It's, again, going very well, which I think takes this board to our next step of, okay, we've checked those three boxes. We've really worked on the hospitalist issue. We've worked on the ED. We've retained, recruited a great CEO that we all respect and like. The next step is let's put together a framework for a deal. That's an easy thing. So, you know, through discussions at the hospital board, we kind of bannered a lot of things around and decided on the deal that was presented to our chairman. It's not perfect, there's some things that we need to work out, and there's some things that will get worked out through the legal process, but Chairman Philbeck talked about the $450,000 that would go towards health-related issues that we would get. I believe the conversation we had is where that would, we'd take a look at trying to index that every three to five years to adjust for inflation. The $20 million bond, that's going to provide us with extremely great flexibility. That's going to be money that we have access to if we needed it, but at the same time, we would have a steady revenue stream from that that this county could use for years to come. So, I think when you add those things together, the county and the citizens are really going to benefit. We talked about in our budget, a lot of things we'd like to do. Well, this is going to free up some money, you know, in the budget that we can really do a lot of stuff with that money and really hopefully make a big difference. The other thing about this is the fact that it's a 40-year lease. It really gives the hospital stability when it comes to building projects and long-term growth. I think the key that the commission, I want the commission to understand is, the hospital's not going to do this and just sit on money. I think the first thing you're going to see is an infusion of money on the grounds. You're going to see $200 million reinvested into the community. You're going to see money spent on the bed tower, you're going to see money with the ED, infrastructure, technology. That's all going to involve new employees, that's going to involve new jobs. That's going to be a shot in the arm for our county. So, they're going to take that money and really reinvest it in Gaston County. What else could you ask for, other than an organization who has a vested interest in the county? The appointments, I also think it's key to know where the appointments come from. I think each commissioner will retain their township appointment. We will have a county commissioner representative on the board. The chief of staff will be on the board. And then the other five appointments that will start after the three this year, the other five appointments will actually come from the nominating committee of the hospital board, of people that we appoint. So, if we do a great job of vetting our appointments and making sure that they understand, they have a fiduciary responsibility to the hospital and a moral responsibility to the citizens of Gaston County, I don't think we're going to have any problem with those appointments. Actually, I think, you know, they're going to be able to review and take a look at what the hospital needs and what board appointments they need, and really be able to make a good decision. I think the fact that we're going to, if this board approves it, open that up to a couple of appointments that can be made outside the county. I think that's key for the organization. Commissioner Carpenter has said so many times that good quality water, air, and transportation doesn't stop at the county line. I've heard him say that, I've heard him say it once, I've heard him say it a thousand times. I would say the same thing for healthcare. I don't think that stops at the county line. So, I believe for the organization to grow, this is vital for Caramont. I think it's a fair deal, I think it's good. I think it's, again, good for the county, it's great for the hospital, and most importantly, as Chairman Philbeck said, the citizens are the real winners here. I want to thank the board, you know, we've had a lot of discussion about this, as you could imagine. Dr. Riley has headed up a lot of those conversations. Donnie Loftus, the vice chair, you guys are very familiar with him, really kind of led the charge on a lot of this stuff and really said, hey, let's get this done. But this proposal, I want to be clear, this proposal was voted on and was unanimously supported by the Caramont Board. These are people that we put on the board. The seven of us put these people on the board, and they were in unity and unanimously supported this proposal, whether Annette Carter, James Beam, Dr. Adcock, people like Spurgeon Mackey, Gus Anthony, Michael Dixon, Dr. Meakin, Jim Bailey, Vince Quinn, David Allen Smith, Mary Frances Forrester. These are the people that offered this proposal, people that we respect, people that we thought enough of to appoint them to this board, and they said, this is in the best interest of the hospital, this is in the best interest of the county. And I think as long as everything goes through on the legal side, Mr. Chairman, I think it's a no-brainer. I'm excited about this, I'm excited about being part of it, and I think this will be a great hit for our county moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Carpenter, then Commissioner Kegger.
Thank you. Well, I've been on this board longer than anybody, and Tom's not far behind me, and Mickey, and we have had people approach us about purchasing the hospital individually or, and I know Tom and I had a discussion with one group, and it looked very interesting, but always had in the back of my mind, that's going to go to some outside group that's going to control the medical care in the county. I am pleased with this proposal that we're going to remain independent here in the county. I think that's a good step. I have expressed concern that, in this agreement, that gives them the ability to negotiate their agreements with joint ventures or other business relations, and I only think that as this hospital is for medical purposes, that those ventures would be medical-related, and I don't know how you would get that into the agreement. I jokingly said, I think it would be a conflict of interest for them to enter into agreement with a funeral home, because that would be, you know, whether I get the money here or over here. Then the other part is my concern with the agreement, that $20 million bond would be the county's, and we would get the interest off of it for ever how many years. I know this board would be very sensitive to that and not cash those bonds in, and I'd like some sort of language in there that it be at least a supermajority before that could happen. And Mr. Moore, I don't know whether we can encumber it any more than that, but I think it would have to be a real, almost crisis before that would happen. And then the other is the $800,000, not the $400,000, that's kind of, it's directed to medical use, but $800,000 that the commissioners would have to use, I would like to have that directed toward either education or economic development. Those are the two top goals of this commission, to have a good education system for our citizens and to develop economic development for jobs and improve our capital base. So, that's my thoughts on this agreement.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Commissioner Kegger?
Well, Joe hit on one of the points I wanted to bring up that we were discussing just 10 minutes ago with some type of formula, and he just mentioned education and EDC. So, if we get something adopted here, I think we can start planning a formula, but that'll be up to this board, so I don't want to keep anybody here longer than we need to. Just a few things, I want to make sure I understand the makeup, and, Mr. Chairman, I may need the chairman, chairwoman of the board to maybe address a question or two?
Sure.
Or whoever else you need to help.
Okay.
Okay, I understand that the seven commissioners would each have a township appointment, and I understand five members, the language that it means, would be appointed by the board of directors themselves.
They would come from our nominating committee?
Right.
Vetted according to what needs?
Would this board make that appointment after your nomination, or would the board itself perpetuate those five?
We would bring the nomination to you.
Okay. And the one member who will be a county commissioner liaison, does that mean it would be a commissioner or their representative?
A commissioner. A commissioner, the liaison would be from this commission board.
But that would be full voting and all that?
Full voting, yes.
Okay. And of course, the chief of staff, okay?
Yes.
Okay. And I do want to reiterate what Mr. Williams stated earlier. You know, I think it served us all well to have this little cooling-off period instead of just getting into it. There was a lot going on. We were recovering from maybe some mistakes. We were looking for a new CEO. So I think that's a credit to everybody involved, that we did have that cooling-off period. And I thank the trustees and the administrators for that. And the only other thing I would just like to bring up, I've had people come up to me over the last several days since this article, I've had people call me, even got a couple of letters in the mail. But I don't think they understand the interest off the bond that we would be receiving. They see 450, and they think that's a small number, but...
Well, the 800 is the interest off the bonds. The 450 is an additional sum.
Yeah. But I'm saying, most people just look at that 450 and don't understand there's 800 to go along with it.
Right.
I would ask, you know, from my perspective, one consideration to look at, and it was sort of, I think Tracy hit on it a little while ago, that $450 payment is worth $450, $450,000 in 2014. What will that 450 be worth in an economy in 2054?
Right.
So I don't know if there's going to be any conversation. I hope there is just about a sliding barometer. Even if it was attached to the revenue, if the hospital, if the corporation had a bad year, it wouldn't grow. If it had a good year, possibly it could grow a percentage, you know, as the barometric pressure goes up and down. Don't want to try to get blood out of a stone if there's no blood to get out of it. And we don't want to, you know, we want to be fair also. And if the hospital or the corporation, I keep saying hospital.
That's okay, we know what you mean.
Corporation had a couple of bad years in a row, we would not want to hurt the health care any further by trying to get more, but maybe that's something we could look at.
Yeah, that's really appreciated, because with the ACA, one doesn't really know what's coming down the road. And so that is appreciated.
Okay. Well, I'm not quite sure what I'll be approving, but I will be approving something close to this, I hope. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Keger. And I did want to assure you, and this will be in part of the direction, that both sides did agree on an index.
Okay.
I share your concern. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madam Chairperson, thank you so much for coming tonight. I think the biggest thing that I, it makes me want to support this idea is what I've seen in the community. We've had three new prongs to the Gaston County, and all three of them are in the same building, and always you are, so thank you so much for you three coming. But I wanted to say what the hospital now has meant to our county. You have the ED going, you have the facilities for the urgent care, you have new things going on at your main facility, you're thinking about expansion. It's finally taken place, and it's not just a one white building in the middle of the county.
That's right.
So I want to thank you guys for that, because it's finally something to be proud of on a different scale, not just that one building. It's really moving forward. You guys have incredibly taken care of, even Mr. Luckett called me after my recent visit just to check on it. But I think that some of the things that happened is what you guys have done. I want to commend you on it. I wanted to see one thing, maybe, even if it's sort of on a different scale, if it's maybe a health summit, I don't know if you guys have this to where it includes something like our health director, because you guys are so intermingled, that maybe there's some way that they could work in. We are talking about community-based things, we're talking about the wellness coordinator, whatever we have to do now that we're starting to put this together, I'd like to see something maybe as a, an approach to where it's a, something to where they're all invited, to where you can, guys can get together, maybe do something with the board or something. I think that may be something that can really satisfy a lot of needs for our community, because we do serve so many through the health department. But thank you so much for coming, and thank you for your time and what you guys have done.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Fraley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had one question regarding the lease to start with, and I don't know who's the best to answer this, maybe Chuck, but the corporate bond, is it just the same as cash as far as our fund balance would be concerned?
Well, we don't know the answer to that yet, because we haven't seen the proposal. And actually, in the letter here, it says that it would be crafted in terms that would be agreeable to the parties. So I think that's something that we have to discuss to see what would work best for...
Well, I think it'd be very important for us for that to be the case, because that automatically would bump up that from our standpoint, when we're looking at borrowing money and the interest rate, we can borrow money at, so keep our bond rating strong. So I hope that's the way it's going to be. And I agree with Joe, I think it needs to be something that, you know, it would have to be something drastic before we would want to cash any of that in, start dipping into it, finding reasons to, you know, to cash those bonds in, just use the 4% or whatever it earns off of that money. And as far as the lease, you know, I'm going to put some more time looking at it also before we vote on it. I may have other questions down the road. But right now, it seems to be a pretty healthy lease for both parties, and I think it's one the citizens of this county, the forefathers, you know, who sacrificed a lot to make sure we had this in our community can feel, you know, can finally rest in peace that hopefully we're going to get something finalized and move forward in a positive direction. And hopefully, it'll be one that the hospital can move forward and accomplish its objectives also. And one thing on a personal note I'd like to add, Mr. Chairman, is just a heartfelt thank you from me. My son was in this facility, and I think some of you, if all of you don't know it, but he had two surgeries in the past month, and he received excellent care, I mean outstanding care, hospital, doctors, nurses. I mean, very clean, professional, neat, organized facility, and he was very pleased as the patient, and I was very pleased as the parent. And I just hope that the county will support this, the hospital, and realize what a vital asset it is, and to keep it strong and to use it and support it locally. Thank you, and I appreciate all y'all that did for him. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Fraley. Just want to add a couple of things. We've had so much turmoil in the past, I think it's good sometimes to stop and talk about the good things. One thing I failed to mention is the Veterans Memorial. I want to thank the hospital and the Veterans Council for following through with that. I think it's going to be a great asset to Gaston County. Also, just want to make sure that, I wanted to thank Commissioner Williams. He has spent a tremendous amount of time, more than I would want to, on this issue. I think being fair and impartial representative of the hospital, and I think as a commissioner faithful to the citizens as well. And I don't think this lease would be where it's at without his involvement on it. And I just definitely want to give credit where credit is due, and just thank you for the work you've done there. So at this time, what I plan on doing is giving direction. After I give direction, if the board is not pleased with it, please let me know. So here's the direction based off of the comments I've heard in previous comments. We do want to go with outside council. That's my understanding. And I think we, I think we would approve, I think it's Mullen, Holland, and Cooper. Am I correct, Mr. Attorney? Okay, we're good with that. We do want to move in that direction. We agree in concept of the letter that was sent to us in that $200,000 corporate bond with the corporate...
20 million?
Yeah, 20 million corporate bond with a 4% indexed, or 4% return, $450,000 from the hospital as well for community health care projects. Looking at a 40-year lease with one additional rollover, but both parties, if I'm understanding, have a right to get out. I don't know what the, it may be 10 years or 20 years before the term's over. I think that's something that has to be discussed. I think the five at-large appointments, and again, with this board being able to put the stamp on that, once your nominating committee chooses those, I think that is the direction. Also, we would want it indexed. That is the direction as far as it would be in the lease. We would want the bonds, we would want the lease worded in such a way as the bonds could count as cash, and you would just have to look at the language on that. We would also like to put in the lease, and I think if we do it in the lease, since it would be tied up in the lease, we could probably do it, but we would want it to be where the bond, the 20 million bond could not be sold without the consent of a supermajority. Now, I think if we do a resolution, that could easily be trumped by the next board, but if we tie that into a lease, we make it, make that a little bit harder to do. And I think that's the direction. We would also, we want to be careful. We want to take our time and get it done, but based off of just conversations I've had, heard in the future, we want folks to work with the hospital to get it done. We don't want to drag it out over months, and if at any time there's an issue, let's get both sides together quickly and move through some of these issues. So what we don't want is attorneys messing it up. The spirit of what we have, it is what it is. I think we've got good cooperation. We want to continue to move in that direction. Unless there's any other from the board, is that Commissioner Keger?
Yeah, I agree with everything. Just to clarify, Caramont will own the $20 million bond?
No, county will.
County will.
We will.
The county will own it.
The county will own it, okay. That, I wish there was some legal way we possibly could get the General Assembly to padlock that for us, if we requested, you know, if unanimous board asked the General Assembly to make sure no future boards, with the exception of maybe the county becoming bankrupt or something like that, padlock that amount.
We can look into that.
And that would be a great vehicle for that formula for education and development.
I agree. I agree.
And I, one other clarification, Mr. Carpenter mentioned that he and I were approached, and we were, by a national corporation. I want to point out that was 14 years ago.
Thank you.
Okay? It wasn't like it was yesterday or last year or anything.
Wasn't yesterday?
It was 14 years ago.
Scary.
Just one caution, asking the legislature to get involved in something that might become problematic. I just think if we can do it here within our lease to take care of that, that's, that would be my preference.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with that, too. I think if we get the legislator in, it also might keep us from being able to say this is bond money that we can actually use in event of emergency, that would not be like cash anymore. It would just be, you know, I think that could affect that, yeah.
I think if we tie it in the lease with some language that, and at the end of the day, we work for the people. 20 years from now, 10, the people elect people, and this is what they want to do, sell it, let the will of the people prevail.
And I would also like to thank Mickey Price and you, myself serving on the original lease committee, because those talks were not always as pleasant as these have been. So we've moved a long way, and I'm glad we're heading in a positive direction. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry for acknowledging that. That was so rough, I didn't even want to go back in for it. So we're good. Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, I think the only thing that, yeah, I guess a couple of things we need to work out in the language where I think it's a little vague at this point, is like the chairman said, we want to make sure that we give a notification period that the county, if we chose to get out of the lease or not renew it, that's fair to the hospital, that gives them plenty of time to make arrangements, renegotiate, look elsewhere, whatever. I think we need to make sure that that's, you know, that's in there and that it's fair to both parties. I think, you know, we could also look at the way the governance is right now, we have five at-large appointments that are kind of all at one time. If the hospital and this board wanted to entertain the thought of, you know, maybe starting next year, maybe redeveloping a timing process where maybe there was one at-large appointment a year or something like that, so that wasn't all clumped up, you know, we can, we can talk with them and see if that's something they're interested in. But I think just if there's any governance structure, we need to take a look at with that. But other than that, I agree with you on the bond, you know, as long as it is what it is, it's liquid, it's there for us, you know, if a board wants to do something, you know, let them do what they're elected to do. But I think once we kind of get those details worked out, I think this thing's ready to go. I'm excited to do it, and as the chairman said, don't let the attorneys get in the way.
Commissioner Brown?
Just one question, clarification. Can you tell me the exact number now? Because we're at seven, we know, from this. In addition to the at-large we already had, or this is replacing the at-large?
Each commissioner will have their own appointment, township.
The seven.
Then you'll have a commissioner appointed from this board to be a voting member. Then you'll have the chief of staff. And then you'll have five township, I mean, excuse me, at-large appointments that the nominating committee...
Correct. So it'd be one less than there now.
So it should be the exact number.
Exact number, same number. 14.
Okay. Chuck, did you get that direction, and do you understand it?
Don't get in the way.
Don't get in the way.
Some of the five can be from outside Gaston County.
Correct.
Yes.
And no appointments are to be made as far as the five at-large until after January the 1st. That's a sticking point. So in other words, if we make the agreement today, no, the hospital can't make any at-large appointments till after January the 1st.
Yeah, I think there are.
There's three coming up this year.
Right.
So this board will appoint those, and then after January the 1st, the hospital will be able to nominate going forward.
My understanding is that this board will continue to appoint all the appointments.
Correct.
But after this year, we'll go to nominations...
Yeah, after this year, they'll have five at-large nominations that we will appoint.
That'll be binding, too?
Yeah, that'll be binding.
Yes.
Okay. Gentlemen? Any other direction? Not on this, I had one other issue. Okay, we do have other matters. Commissioner Keger on another issue.
Okay, two things, actually, very, very brief. One, I don't want to bring up bad news, but I do just want to mention the accident at the animal control with the dog that was picked up and euthanized pretty quickly. And I do realize, and I want people to know, that the dog did not have a chip, did not have a tag, which could have prevented all this. So there, you know, there is some responsibility to ownership. But, you know, some people, their pets are extremely important to them, and I don't know what the county has done with regards to trying to correct this with the individual, but I hope that the county has contacted the individual, and if, maybe if nothing else, we allow him to adopt an animal at no cost, you know, just to show good faith that, you know. But then again, there is some liability with the owner. But I wanted to see if the county could do something there. And the second thing is, Rodney, want to step around the corner? Recently, the county police, Mr. Fraley, can he see you? There you go. I wanted the camera to see you. This past week, I got to spend a few hours with Rodney and his partner on the new, I call it a PT boat. Rodney was very instrumental in getting this package put together. He's even gone out to the West Coast to practice and learn this boat, and it's an amazing vehicle. vehicle. There's none like it around here, and Charlotte Mecklenburg is already going to place an order, they're so jealous. But it's going to be a great asset with more and more communities growing on the waterfronts in Gaston County. Rodney was real instrumental in putting the technology together as well as working on the funding apparatus for this thing. We were able to get this for about $240,000, and the tag was $320,000. And as the chief had instructed, there is a slogan on the side of that boat. No public tax dollars went towards the purchase of this vehicle. So I just wanted to shout out to Rodney, he was recognized at the police awards last week, and I just want to thank you for saving the taxpayers a lot of money.
I would like to piggyback something off of Commissioner Keger's statement toward that. They also, the company that they bought the boat from also offered them to go to Virginia, was it? Virginia Beach, Virginia, to be their pilot, their captain for what they make on the East Coast. Unfortunately, some scheduling conflicts got in the way, and so hopefully they'll be able to go back in the future years with the board's support of that. It would be at no cost to the county. That company picks up that cost and sends that up there for those guys to go, which is really a big thing. But also, while we're talking about it, I wanted to let people know about what's going on with the Mountain Island Lake Marine Commission. At no time, I've seen the news for each thing this week talking about how this is going to be detrimental. It's not. Those guys are still going to be on the lake, Mecklenburg County's still going to be on the lake, Wildlife's going to be on the lake. We also have the U.S. Coast Guard is going to be on the lake. So boater safety is still going to be intact and everything for people to enjoy a pleasurable afternoon with their families and doing things on the lake is going to be forefront, and our marine patrol is going to be a part of that, and we're excited to see that still carrying on. The marine commission was not there to enforce the laws, that's what the law enforcement does. Thank you, Commissioner Brown. I think we have one more comment from Ms. Sheila Riley, and then we'll adjourn.
I think I sat down too soon. I just wanted to thank the commissioners from the bottom of my heart. I think this is extremely exciting for Gaston County, and we at Karamout look to a great working relationship moving forward with this lease. I'm very excited and thank you all very much.
Thank you, Sheila.
That's all I want to say.
Thank you for coming. Commissioner Carpenter, last comment.
Well, this is, I had a citizen, a couple, tell me that I didn't smile much, you know, and I told them, I said, you know, we deal with such serious things, I don't have a lot to smile about, but if the cameras are on me, whichever way it is, I can smile. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes our meeting for tonight. Our next work session is June 10th. We will hold a special meeting immediately following the work session to hold a public hearing on the proposed 2014-2015 Gaston County budget. Citizen comment is welcome. Our next regular meeting is June 24, 6:00 p.m. at the Harley B. Gaston Junior Public Forum Courthouse. Thank you for watching. If you have questions or comments, please telephone our clerk, who is going to be a grandmother very soon. Congratulations, Ms. Granny, I mean Donna Bupp, at 704-866-3196, and share them. This time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned.